Start with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart.
I am going to forego our the narrative prior to a meeting since we all are well aware of it and we don't have any other anyone from the public here. Everyone, is everyone okay if I pass on that?
Sure.
Okay. So we'll move on. I don't think we have any public comment, so we can pass that. Oh, wait, we got one public comment.
So, uh, my name-
Excuse me, could you come up to the table, please?
Chad Spooner, I live on twenty-two South, at twenty-two South Elm Street. Um, I just want to mention that today is the mayor's sixtieth birthday. So, uh, happy birthday, Mayor.
Happy birthday. What a way to spend your birthday.
And they don't ask me how they-
It's not home anymore, does it?
No, no, they used to. If I knew that was your public comment, I would have passed on it. But thank you, thank you, Chad. I've had many well wishes, so thank, thank everyone. Is there any other public comment?
I look a day over fifty-nine.
Thank you. Hearing none, we'll move on. Maureen, we'll get you in and out. We'll move to the downtown board update with Maureen Brown.
See, I've got twenty minutes on here. It's not gonna take twenty minutes.
That's what we like to hear.
After Brendan, we give everyone forty minutes, so.
Maureen, thank you for joining us tonight. We started inviting boards in to give updates, so we are better informed and and potentially ways that we might be able to help, so.
Awesome.
Thank you for joining us.
I must put my glasses on. So, we have met by Zoom monthly, um, and we've, our committees have been relatively active. The merchants committee has been meeting once a month on Wednesdays. Not a lot of participation of recent, but when we had our legislators involved, um, we actually had a decent participation and, uh-
Maureen, can I interrupt you one second? If you feel more comfortable taking your mask off, you're welcome to, you're welcome to do that.
Thank you. So, yeah, we had a little bit better participation when our legislators were involved. So I think, you know, we'll try and do that whenever possible. But they were giving us some really good insight on, on what was going on in Montpelier and what we could do as a community to, to try and better prepare for COVID and help the merchants in that way. As things began, uh, it was, it was great that the city purchased masks for the, for the merchants downtown, and I think that, that helped out a lot in trying to keep the area safe. I think the majority of our businesses have done okay. You know, we hear that there are some that, that didn't have a great, great year. My particular business, we're off substantially. But, uh, you know, I've made what, what necessary cuts we've had to do to keep it going. And hopefully, as we get into the next season here, um, it doesn't kill us too badly. Especially with the new updates as of today, um, but we'll see how that goes. We've had a pretty decent, um, business with the essential travelers and whatnot coming in. And the summer season into the fall, um, we did all right. You know, we, we've had quite a bit of business coming into the area from, from my standpoint, considering what we've had to deal with. The downtown program itself has funded, um, some media ads. We did, uh, a nice spread with Seven Days. We've, right now, we're currently, uh, which is why Chip is not here, we're entertaining some vids on, um, doing some social media advertising and trying to, um, improve our presence on social media. Uh, we've had several people apply for that, um, so Chip is getting together with our promotions committee tonight to go over some of the, uh, proposals, and then we're gonna do some interviews on the, uh, potential candidates for that.
Is that a seasonal vid package, or is that-
No, it would be annual. A lot of them are gonna come in. They're not cheap, mind you, um, but it is, uh, it's a package that goes throughout the year. And I, I think some of them, um, have somewhat of an à la carte thing, so you can, um, pick and choose and, and eliminate some of the expense. We've looked, tried to do local. We had quite a few, um, quite a few bids from outside of the area, but we've had a few local bids too, so we're gonna try and keep it local if we can and make it as cost effective as possible. Some of the events, Spooky Saturday, um, I think was a, a big success. We had a lot of positive feedback with that, to the point where I would suggest we look at doing something similar moving forward. It, it saved, you know, the mayhem on Main Street that, that is spooky Saturday, and it also was able to spread it out a little bit longer for, for families to, to be able to enjoy it. I think, uh, you know, even without COVID, it was great, you know, we, the tables, we had the, uh, the vendors that, that put out candy for the kids, um, dressed up, and it's just like everybody got involved with it. So, um, if that's something that, that, uh, we can pull off in the future, I think it'd be a great thing for the community and just get it off congesting Main Street like it does for the, it's only an hour, hour and a half, but it's pretty crazy when, when it's going on. Moving forward, um, we have chosen not to do the tree lighting or fireworks this year. The tractor parade is canceled. I believe the running of the bells is still happening, or there's something going on down at the bay.
Running of the bells is happening at the bay.
Yeah, but nothing here in town as far as, um, any major get togethers. The spooky Saturday was, was, we were able to do it because we technically gave away tickets, so we were able to, um, really keep an eye on how many were attending. We didn't actually have to turn anybody away, even if they didn't have tickets, just because of how it was, um, staged, so. But these other things are, are, they're just too hard to really track, um, and, and keep, uh, keep people safe at this point. So, all of that is not going on this time. Festival of Trees, they are, hopefully, um, they've gotten a lot of businesses interested in displaying trees in their business as opposed to having the gala. There will not be a gala this year. But they're going to put, um, decorated trees in business windows and then let the, um, public bid on those trees. So, it's, uh, it's the best they can do under current circumstances, but it's, it's something. And then as far as last night goes, unfortunately, as we just start getting that geared up, we have to put a, put that to the brakes as well. Not a lot going on. We're gonna try and promote whatever is going on with the local businesses. And perhaps try and do a socially distant paint and sip, maybe a couple of those. But otherwise, um, no, no big, big push for, uh, for New Year's Eve this year. Earlier this year, we did, uh, started Downtown Dollars Program. Chip, Marty was involved and, and I got on some of the calls, monthly calls with, uh, various downtown organizations, um, throughout the state. And, uh, we got the idea to do the Downtown Dollars Program. And that's taken off pretty well. I know that my daughter got one for graduation. A lot of the businesses are buying them in bulk and giving them to their employees. And it's a great way to just reinvest right in our downtown. I know that some of the businesses, um, are collecting the, the Downtown Dollars coupons and have not really submitted them for, for payment back to their business yet, but, uh, we're trying to, you know, encourage them to do that so that they can get the money back. So far, I guess, more than ten thousand dollars in gift cards have been given out. And then we also received a ten thousand dollar grant to distribute, um, and match additional cards. They'll be sold online, actually, starting tomorrow, so. That's the bulk of what's been going on. Any questions?
I would just add to it, Maureen. In Good Taste, which is usually for the end of January, is supposed to be canceled as well. We're doing a, uh, sort of a hybrid where those producers can offer their products in gift baskets for people to buy. So we're doing that. The other one is, um, Chip and I and Marty have met, with Jason Brewley, who's the property manager, over where what a yarn used to be. And having a discussion about the potential for a pop-up market between, during the holiday season. So it could be, uh, you know, twelve to fifteen eight-foot tables in there with crafts or food or baked foods, whatever the case might be. We just had a preliminary meeting last week, so we're, we reached out to the farmer's market to see if they wanted to organize and run it. I don't know what the outcome of that was. But Healthy Roots may be involved in that as well, so that may be one, another thing for the downtown.
That's awesome. And we did actually, they, they, there's a new, uh, information board installed in the, in the parking garage over by the hotel, that, uh, we can put up notices and, um, information on what's going on there. I have a key, um, so if there's any, any, uh-
I thought that turned out well. Looks good. Nice spot.
Yeah, it looks great. Looks great. We certainly have enough people hanging out in the garage these days, so see what's going on. And, yeah, we do, we actually have a lot of long-term, um, people staying at the hotel, so it's good to have some information.
Anyone have any questions for, for Maureen? Chad?
Just a couple. How has parking been this year? Has it been a little bit better than years past, or about the same?
Parking for, for-
Like on Main Street?
On Main Street. We have not had heated conversations, I guess, about that lately. I think the two-hour free parking in the garage was a great, uh, great addition. And to keep it going through the, through the summer was a good idea. But no, I, uh, I, I think people are okay with it so far, you know?
Considering the situation, if it hasn't been issued, something we've seen in the past.
Yeah, I mean, and, you know, certainly we're not taking up a lot of space in the garage with the, with the hotel right now. Don't really see, there's been a couple of days, I guess, where I've come in and had to go up a couple floors, but it's been, um, been pretty good.
Are you allowed to be full capacity now, or no?
We are, but it's not been-
Nobody's traveling, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it, tonight, we're, we're actually pretty busy. We're, we're at a little over eighty percent, so for, uh, midweek in November, I think that's pretty good. The weekends, we tend to die, cause that's when we rely on group business and, you know, there's no hockey and there's no, uh, ski groups this year. There's none of that, so.
Early in the summer, Maureen, I think the consensus was there's a lot of tourists on Main Street. Is that sort of carried through?
Yeah, I mean, we had even, you know, a lot of weddings were canceled, but we still got quite a few anyway. Scaled down weddings, but we had a lot of, um, visitors for that. You know, we've had some people come in. We, we were storing bikes, so I know that there were people coming and biking the area. It was good because, you know, within a drive of us, there was still a lot of green in, in the areas around us, so we did have, um, quite a bit of, you know, traffic that way. But again, you know, it's hard to tell. You've got people coming from, from all over the place and, you know, they, they say they've quarantined properly and we have them sign off on the paperwork and, um, hope that they're being truthful, so. But there, we did, we did see quite a bit of, um, out-of-state traffic this summer.
Any other questions for Maureen?
Just, uh, just two comments. One thing, um, that may, may be beneficial or may not be. I know we've done the Kim and Shee Classic every year, and this past year, they did kind of like a parade thing. But, um, I, there's a, there's car clubs that get together in Swanton. There's one that gets together in the Highgate Shopping Plaza. They're not necessarily classic cars. They might be more, you know, nineties, early two thousand Japanese cars, or something like that. Having Car Club Night somewhere in town might be beneficial and something you guys, maybe you wanna talk about, like on a Friday night, you know, Church Street, you know, Chevys. Or, you know, a week, another weekend will be Fords or whatever, just so you don't get, you know, two hundred cars. Um, and the last thing I want to say is this year is really important for our residents to shop downtown and spend money in, in our downtown, so that's gonna be more important this year than it has been in many years past.
Yeah, no, I agree. And that's, that's where the Downtown Dollars Program is, is really a, a great idea. You know, even just, you know, for Christmas presents, cause then they can use them throughout, you know, as things slow down after the holiday season. So, um, so, yeah, I think that, that hopefully we'll, uh, we'll see a boost from that. And again, we're, you know, we're, with the whole social media, we're trying to, uh, do what we can to try and, and, uh, downtown St. Albans. The merchants usually get together and do some cooperative advertising around the holidays. We're looking at that. Um, I've had some proposals from Star ninety-two point nine, um, and some other things to try and get everybody on board to, to really try and promote the area. It is gonna be a tough winter, unfortunately.
Okay, any question?
I love the idea that you're doing the Festival of the Trees still downtown, finding a way to do that. I think that would be a real draw for people. What's the timing on that? Do you have any idea when they would put trees up?
They usually start, um, the weekend after Thanksgiving, I think. But, uh, a lot of, I mean, as far as the businesses go, you know, they can put their stuff up. Like I had my today, cause it was so nice out. So, um, I think, you know, as far as the timing goes, I'm not, I don't know specifically when the bidding is gonna be done. But we can certainly get that information out to everybody.
Cause I think between the Downtown Dollars Program, which is awesome, and that, you know, people will want to, it would be a nice experience to walk up and down Main Street, do some shopping, look at the trees, make your bids. And I would say the sooner you could get them up and get people walking around would be awesome. I think it's a great idea. Nice work.
Is there something that, that could be done with the hotel and the merchants together? Like, uh, um, shop today, spend the night, or shop today, spend the night, and show me receipts of this much money and there's a discount to stay in the night at the hotel?
That's not a bad idea, and certainly we could, we could work on that. There's also the Bingo Program, which I, I forgot to mention, um, which is trying to get all of the, the businesses involved. I don't, if you've seen the, the cards, I didn't bring one in, but, um, that's one thing. We didn't get a ton of participation the first time we did it. We're on the second go-round right now. Tried to make the cards a little easier to get a bingo, um, but it's, uh, it's a, it's a nice way to try and get the community involved. So, yeah, but that's a good idea.
I mean, if people wanna come and shop and then go to Twigs or, or one of the buyers or something, and then not have to worry about driving, they can just walk up to the hotel, show their receipts and a dollar amount, whatever it is, someone decides, and you got a discount at the hotel or something, I don't know.
Yeah, no, that's a great idea.
And with people not able to go anywhere else, the weekend in St. Albans might be a destination getaway.
The pool?
The pool's open. We are limiting occupancy in the pool, but we do have it open. And it's, I, I think we're, you know, not a lot of hotels are doing that. But we've been able to maintain a safe environment in there and still keep it open.
Maureen, just to clarify too, you said there was no, um, tree lighting events, but the, just so people know, they, they are lighting the park and the trees all on Main Street, so the, the lights will be on, but they just won't do the bonfire and the, Santa and all that, so.
Ceremony.
Ceremonial. Well, Maureen, you'd be glad to know you made twenty minutes, so.
Oh, wow. Sorry I was so long-winded, Tim. Thank you all.
Thank you, Maureen. Thanks for coming in. For those who don't know, Mike is home because he's, uh, covering the household with Molly. Mike, I just got a text, uh, because you're so intent in the meeting, uh, someone just saw Molly on Main Street. All right, we're moving on to item number four. Is, uh, Tom here?
No, I'll cover that.
Covering it. So loan agreement?
This is a loan agreement for the, um, pre-engineering for the water tower at Aldis Hill. The original loan was for fifty-four thousand five hundred, uh, under the state revolving loan fund program. There's no interest and principal payments, uh, are deferred for five years. This increases it to sixty-nine-five. The increase in the total cost was thirty thousand, but there's fifteen thousand in loan forgiveness built in. So, we look for a motion to approve the SRF line.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Tim, seconded by Jim. Any further conversation or questions for Dom? Good, Chad? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Jim, you're set?
I'm set, sorry.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes.
Motion to approve warrant eleven-three-twenty.
Second.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Jim to approve warrant for eleven-three. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Warrant passes.
Motion to approve minutes, uh, special meeting eleven-two-twenty.
Motion from Tim, is there a second? Seconded by Chad, to approve minutes of eleven-two-twenty. Any corrections, amendments?
I don't have my packet. Was I here at both of those meetings?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, you were on, one you were and one you-
Zoom, okay, all right.
Yeah, they're the, uh, they were the first two, they were the interviews.
Oh, okay, all right.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Motion passes.
Motion to approve, uh, minutes eleven-four-twenty.
Second.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Chad. Any questions, comments, amendments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. Moving on to item number seven. Consider a resolution, um, of acquisition of Walden Street property from Green Mountain Power.
I can take that, too.
Can, before we do that, can we just, um, Marty, do you wanna just jump in? I know we talked about the water tower, but you wanna just touch on, uh, conversations you've had? Is that appropriate?
Uh, I would, at this point, I don't think we have much to do.
Okay. All right, sorry, Dom.
So it's warrant for two items, uh, but they're both baked into, uh, the resolutions that we've asked you to sign. Uh, there's two resolutions, um, that work in tandem, that authorize the, the acquisition of the property from Green Mountain Power. We're acquiring the cooling ponds for twenty-seven thousand dollars, which is the amount that it's appraised for, assessed for on the grand list. There's a cover memo from Chip, um, responding to some of the questions that came up last time about the level of risk for cleaning it up. And there's also, um, with, uh, embedded within the resolution authorizes the city manager to grant back the easements that Green Mountain Power needs to drive over the property to access their transmission lines, which will run over the property and will continue to own the land underneath it.
Do we know how much total acreage that is?
I'm not sure if I've seen that.
Is it mainly just the ponds, nothing that extends south?
It's put on a map here, doesn't it?
No, if you look at it, and if you look at the, you see the map?
It goes, under Lot One, Lot Two, it gives you the acreage. Where the caption in the middle of each lot has Lot One, Lot Two, gives you the acreage.
Can you read that with your reading glasses?
Yeah, I can.
Yeah. Yeah, five point seven-one acres, uh, uh, let's see, uh, existing area. Lot One to be retained is point, point five-one-seven acres. So I, I'll take it we're Lot Two, right? Lot Two on the map, right?
We're Lot, yeah.
We're Lot Two on the map, yeah.
Yeah.
You're going with old Lot One.
Yeah, but to answer the question, it's just the cooling pond. It's bigger than just the ponds, it's, uh, the land around it. So if you look at both of these renderings together, one, you can kind of see how we would use, use all of the land. Its primary purpose is for stormwater, um, but given the, uh, need for parking in that area of the city, if it's possible to do parking on top of the stormwater structure, that's what we're gonna do.
Is there any water in that pond now?
Yeah. Yeah.
Are we gonna have to drain that out, uh, treat that as contaminated water and then take a look at what's under it? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, just, just in time.
The sampling is going to test the depth of the water, uh, and yet, get a sample of what the water's sitting on, which they think is probably bentonite clay of some sort. Uh, and to test the water itself. They, they don't think there's a lot of reason to think the water is contaminated. But we've done, we've done things like that before, uh, where we had to deal with some contaminated water off the Streetscape project back in twenty-twelve. And sometimes you can get permission to run it through the wastewater treatment plant, depending on if you can di- what, back then, we had petroleum contaminated water from a pit or something like that. And we were allowed to actually just dilute it in a frac tank and then just run it through the wastewater treatment plant.
I wasn't very impressed with their, um, uh, their statement that they were not gonna allow us to go on there and make any type of additional, um, survey or sampling, uh, without us owning it. I, I don't know if that, if that prevents them from any further liability or not, but, I mean, I, I, I don't know if that was the thinking or not. But it is what it is, no matter who did it, you know, so.
You know, the, um-
But apparently you're not too nervous about it.
We're not too nervous. We're, we're finding this is actually, this is something that's coming up with other land that we're looking at that could be brown. It's, so it's not out of turn. I'd look at it this way. They, they had a couple issues. They fixed them. The state, the state signed off and said, you folks have done everything you need to do. And there's nothing happening on the site where the state said, we need to continue to monitor this or monitor that. It's really just, the site's fine as it is, but if you're gonna go and disturb it, then we need to know what's there, because you might have to do remediation as part of disturbing it, moving soil off or around. And GMP has no need to do that. You know, the sites, that, actually, they're not using for anything, really. They're gonna keep the substation under this proposal. So it's understandable that they'd say, look, you know, you, you might find something bad. And we would look really horrible to the people we answer to if we, we looked, we, we disturbed a site we didn't need to disturb, for, did this environmental assessment, we found something bad, and we didn't have to do it in the first place. So that sort of justifies why they're saying, look, city, we get it, you know, this, we love, they, they, they're happy with us having the land.
Yeah.
But they're not, they don't, they don't see the, the, their interest in taking on that liability risk of doing the environmental assessment, and then they might be saddled with something.
Other than the, other than the gas broke by it, I mean, Jimmy, and you're, you've lived here all your life, me too, Timmy. I don't remember anything big over there that's caused any kind of, nothing like some of the major stuff in the city, the railroad property in the major part of the city.
No, can't remember anything.
I mean, it's not gonna be too bad over there, I don't, I wouldn't think.
There's a diesel generator there, and I think the tanks were buried. I think that's your biggest issue.
Yeah.
And they took those out and had to clean it up.
They did that cleanup, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just for the public record, the gas broke is Stevens Brook.
Stevens Brook, yeah. We know ours is a gas broke.
We don't think it came from them, though. Someone else's smell.
So we, I, I think we have a motion?
No, I'll make it, though.
No?
Yeah, I'll make, uh, uh, authorize the acquisition. Make a motion to, uh, acquire the Walden Street property from GMP for use as a stormwater treatment facility.
Second.
Seconded by Chad. Motion by Tim, seconded by Chad. Any other questions for Chip or Dom? Hearing none. All those in favor of the authorization, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposite, any opposition? Hearing none.
In conjunction, uh, I'll, uh, motion to grant easements to GMP related to the Walden Street acquisition.
Second.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Jim, uh, regarding granting an easement to GMP. Any further questions for Dom or Chip?
Do we, on this one and the one above, where approval of loan agreement, is there anything that we need to sign tonight?
The resolution for this is coming around.
Okay.
Check the packet. I, I think it was just a motion for the loan.
Okay, I thought I saw something with a bunch of lines on it.
Oh, that'd be the ordinance, second reading of the ordinance.
Okay.
No, you might be right, Chad.
That was before the warrants, then.
Oh.
It said something about exhibit C.
Yeah, exhibit D.
Yeah.
Want me to use this one as the pass around?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Good catch, Chad.
It's C, not D then, right?
No, I got a, I got a D, but that's signed by you.
Yeah, look, go back a couple pages to C. Here. Here.
Okay.
I thought it was exhibit C.
Okay, well, I guess indeed is the same thing then. Okay.
Want me to call Tom real quick?
Mike, can you hear, are you being, are you able to hear okay?
Okay, we ready to move on? So we'll move on to item number nine, the second reading of the Lake Street.
Mr. Mayor, I think we made the motion, but I don't think, I don't think we...
The motion was made by Tim, seconded by Jim. No comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. Now we'll move on to item number nine, second reading.
This would continue some of the changes we're proposing for truck traffic on Lake Street that would match the emergency ordinance that you passed last month. But we have two corners turning right onto Catherine from Lake and turning right onto South Main Street from Lake that we've had issues with tractor trailer trucks hitting buildings or hitting equipment. I think that alone is, is, you know, why staff would recommend that we pass this ordinance so that we can enforce the trucks taking other paths to get to Main Street. On, on the programmatic side, we have finalized that signage plan that we shared with you at the last meeting. We added some signs to make it clear that trucks, depending on what direction they're coming from, should... If they need to turn right off of Lake, they should use Market. If they're coming in from Federal, they should go straight on Catherine. They should get on Stebbins Street. And then get to Main Street from Stebbins. And so we'll have signage that would show that at the end of Stebbins Street, there's a sign of Route 7 going up Stebbins, you know, you're on your way, you're good. At the end of Federal, there'd be a sign saying, "Route 7, go straight onto Catherine." And then to take the right onto Market, we had the engineers look at the turning radiuses of the longest trucks we could, we could think of would be on the road, and there are a couple, there's one parking spot that we could adjust, and some lane markings we could adjust to let the trucks know they can use the entire lane on Lake Street to go around. So we have a plan on how to make Market Street more amenable to that right turn. And then Public Works could start putting the signs up in the next few days.
Any questions for Chip? Hearing none. What was his second reading, so...
Second reading, yeah.
We've approved from second readings, haven't we?
What?
We've approved from second readings, haven't we?
No, we did first reading. We did, we did the emergency ordinance and then the first reading of the permanent change. And this is the second reading of the permanent change.
But we've, after, after the, the second reading, we've, we've often approved it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So normally you have the second reading in the public hearing?
Yeah.
And then once that's closed, you can consider whether or not you want to adopt the ordinance. Right, I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question.
Oh, I see, you got it in, you got it in that way, you got it written that way on the agenda anyway.
And the fine structure is the same as we, as you adopted for the Upper Walden Street issues.
So is there a... You still need a motion for the second reading, right?
Yes, number ten.
We don't need a...
Just close the public hearing for the second reading.
I move that we adopt the Lake Street truck ordinance.
Second? Seconded by Tim? We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance for Lake Street truck traffic. Are there any questions for Chip? Any more questions, anyone? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the, adopting the ordinance, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none. The ordinance is approved. Are you, 11, name for Heflin Lane? Is that you, Chip, or...
Yeah, this is something we're gonna start seeing a lot more of because E911, under their guidelines, they like any, any driveway that serves more than one building to have its own name so that every building along that driveway can have its own address. So, the city council just barely approved a private, new private drive name for the Cadillac Motel because they're building and expanding back there. And they came up with a name for their driveway that, you know, was special to them, city council approved it. And we're having the same situation here. At 239, 241 North Main, the parents are building two duplexes in the back of that lot. And, and, you know, E911, they're really combing our maps, and they're sending Dave Southwick suggested changes all the time, and this was one of them. Since you have two separate buildings that are gonna be added to that backyard, served by this one driveway, they say they'd like, they'd like us to follow their guidelines here too. Have that driveway become a named public, named private drive. And so now you can give all of those buildings a, an address from that named private drive. And then ambulances, police will know where to go once you're up in there. So, the parents suggested a name, Heflon Lane. Heflon apparently has links to some of the historic ownership of the land in that area. E911 has no issues with the name. And so, you know, the only thing the city council's approving is the name of the street. It'll be a private drive, and we will have no liabilities or obligations with maintaining that driveway.
My question, and that, that is for any point in the future?
This is not a situ... Yeah, I mean, typically, if someone's building a street, the city intends to take over, we, we know about it, we've had discussions before the development starts, they have our street specifications for how it's constructed. This is not that kind of situation. You know, the city's not used to having a lot of private drives because most of our developments been, you know, much further in the past. But it's not out of the question for a community to have quite a good number of private driveways that the, that the municipality is not in charge of. And normally it's because of situations like this.
So just to expand on Heflin Lane, Heflin's, lived in that house up front, I believe. Mrs. Heflin was principal at Messenger Street School. Grades one through four. Tim Hawkins visited her quite often. So that, that was, um...
Oh, the pink bench.
See, he remembers, he's scarred by it. And then, her husband owned what, where Travel Cup is now, a small market, which was called Heflin's and was later sold to, became Marlowe's Grocery Store. So, that's the history. She had been in the school system for years and at Messenger Street School for, for many years as well, so...
Now Carol Heflin was her husband.
Yes. So that's, that's the history on the name. Can we entertain a motion to approve the name?
I move that we approve the private road name for Heflin Drive.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, seconded by Marie. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of Heflin Lane, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes.
We're moving into executive session to discuss the Police Advisory Board. The public, we had interviews. Fifteen individuals applied. Interviews were held last night, a week ago Monday, and last Wednesday, where the council interviewed them, and we'll be having a discussion about the makeup of the board and other criteria, so... Would entertain a motion to go into executive session?
So hold on a second, we're not gonna put people on the board tonight. Do we need to go into executive, executive session to discuss how we're gonna vote on people? I don't think so.
Are we, are we 100% sure we're not gonna deliberate on any names?
I am.
So...
I am too.
So there's two, so unless we're all ready, I don't think we should. So if this is just how we're gonna make it up, I don't think we need to go into executive session.
I'm not ready to make that decision.
So we'll have a general discussion about the, the board and what that's gonna look like. And, um...
We're gonna, we're gonna openly discuss our process.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
All right, okay. You got it.
So local access today?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you do, I just want you to do the executive session, and you still have Megan's number?
Yep.
And she, she would leave, and then you could just call her while you're doing something.
I can do.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
Thanks, Chip. Have a good night.
Okay, we'll start out with the simple ones. We're good with seven-member board.
Yes.
Yes.
We were talking about potentially an alternate or something, I think.
I would like to see two alternates.
Two alternates.
And how, remind me how alternates work?
So if someone is not at the meeting, the alternate fills in.
So they do go to the meetings?
They do, they're, yep, they go to the meeting. If the seven chosen members are there, the alternates don't have a vote. If one of them, if one of the seven that we do choose is absent, then we have a first alternate and a second alternate. The first alternate would take that seat and have that vote.
Couldn't, couldn't you have five as a quorum when you have seven of two?
Four would be, four would be a quorum. There's seven folks on it, four's a quorum.
Well, if you wanna go by, by simple majority, yes.
But the alternates, they're there and they can participate in discussion even though all seven members are...
Okay.
And Mike, you think seven's enough?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think seven is, is... In any theory of committees, if you have more than seven, it can start to get unruly and unwieldy. You get up to nine, you start to get to a place where it can be tricky, serving on an 11-person committee frequently. Anything bigger than seven, I think is is a little tough. I mean, we're, we're trying to have a committee that has a diverse set of perspectives on it. We got a lot of great candidates to choose from. But I, I wouldn't, I would want those people to have the opportunity to develop some cohesiveness as a board and a relationship with the police chief. And I think if we make it too big with alternates, that might get in the way. I mean, I'm, I'm open-minded about it, but I think we went from five to seven, I think seven's probably as big as we wanted at this point.
Are you okay with a couple alternates?
Yeah, I think, if we think it's important, I don't think it'll be a problem to go from, to be a seven plus two board, but I definitely wanna be careful about making it so unwieldy that there isn't like a cohesive discussion and an opportunity for those folks to gel as a board.
I don't know, I, my, um, experience in, in some of the boards I've been on with alternate is, um, some of the regulars are, are, it's too easy to skip a meeting. Well, if I skip to be an alternate there, they'll take my place. I just, I feel if you don't, I think it's too loud. I, I, I think you need the, the, the original members there reduced down to a quorum if somebody doesn't show. I think, I don't know, I think it's a mistake to have alternates.
I, I, I don't know that we would need two on a seven-member board. I might be convinced for one. But I think two, to Jim's point, it sort of gives you that out. And to Mike's point, you're gonna have nine at a meeting. How much input does those two alternates have? I think it, I think it, um, it might make it difficult for the chair, whoever that might be, but...
Are, are you having the alternates, Chad? Are you thinking about the alternates because you're worried about, we're not gonna select two people that would otherwise be qualified?
No, I'm just worried, I think there's gonna be a lot of meetings at first, and some, you know, if it's, if it's always on the second Tuesday of the month or something, it might be easier for people to plan, but if it's jumping around a little bit, I'm just feeling that there's always gonna be meetings where one or two people don't show up. So then, then we're, you know...
I think you're almost bringing up another point, Chad, whether we wanna discuss it now or not, and that is attendance requirements.
Yeah. Well, for me, for me, other board members should hold their, their peers within that board accountable for that. So, that's, that's up for them to come back to us and say, "Hey, this person's showing up, has shown up twice this year, that might be reason for removal," and that's for us to do. I just don't, you know...
That could be a hard call for somebody to do that against a
It may be.
fellow citizen or someone you know, or, you know? I think, I think it's...
At that point, it might be best for that person to stop and, you know, some, maybe the chair to pull the person aside and say, "You're not showing up, you know, this is really important, there's a lot of people, there's a lot of other folks that wanted to be on this board. Maybe it's time to step away and come back as a citizen if you have issues."
But I think if it's documented in the, in the, what, the MOU or whatever we use for the board, at least that individual, the chair has something to fall back on. To say, "Look, we've got, can't miss four meetings in a year and you've missed five, we need to address this," or as of being subjective and saying, "Look, you've missed a lot of meetings."
If we do that for that board, I think we need to do it for every one of them. And I don't think we have that with any of the other ones.
We don't have that on the downtown board?
No idea.
Alright, so let's, um, alternate. Go around, what you're like, what you're liking. Tim?
I'm either way, I'm either way. I could have them or not. I'll go with what the majority wants.
I think I feel similarly. I don't, I think this board, especially as it starts, is gonna need to become cohesive, like come together. And that'll be harder with a larger group. But I like the flexibility that an alternate gives you. So I don't know, I'm on the fence about it.
James, you're...
No, against alternates.
Marie?
I'm okay with alternates. I think, I don't think it's a bad idea. There's gonna be people that are gonna miss meetings once in a while for various reasons, sick or, you know, out of town or something, so... Yeah, I think it'd be a good thing. Have alternates.
Chad, what do you want?
I'd like to see alternates. I can go with only one, one's fine.
So two to one right now. So you guys are in, in an alternate side?
Everyone, I say everyone, is like, can we get to a consensus of...
Wait, you didn't ask Mike?
Oh, Mike, sorry about that.
I'm okay with, with alternates. The biggest thing that's sort of swaying me against my original comments is that we do have a whole lot of people who applied. We had some really great candidates. If we have an opportunity for another person or two to participate, that's not a bad thing, and...
You're good with one, Mike?
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good compromise.
Yeah.
Tim, you're good with one?
Yep.
I'll, I'll compromise on one.
Marie?
One's fine.
I don't think we need a motion, we're just gonna turn these over to Dom. Okay. Let's go to the non-city resident discussion. I think we had some, we did have some advocates. We touched on it briefly, but I don't know that anyone is too concerned about it. The individuals that we had were all working in the city, so they're here a good chunk of time, so they're well aware, and they're well, their, their interactions with the police is
One of them was close, I've got a city mailing address and, you know, so...
I would say that the, a person should have to have some tie to the city of St. Albans. Just somebody from South Burlington can't come in here and say, "I wanna be on the police"
Right.
The police advisory board.
Right.
Some ties with the city of St. Albans, something. Work here. Have second home here or something, you know?
I think worker, worker live here, I think that's...
Worker live here, yeah.
And we are, we are there, so that's...
Yep, I think everyone, everyone needs qualifications.
Good, and we are, well, maybe we're not. We are... What are people's thoughts relative to the chair? Good. And we are, well, maybe we're not. Um, we are, wha, what are people's thoughts relative to the chair? Do we appoint them up front before we, um, wrap this up? Or is this something we want the board to decide?
I've been, I've been thinking about, I think we should select a chair. I think, Tim, you said that and I agree with you.
I'll, I'll give you an example. For a long time, courts didn't want lawyers to be on juries. Why? Cause we overpowered people, just by the, our knowledge of the law. That changed after a while, but I, I think this, we can draw the same conclusion here. I think somebody overpowering and someone who's not, they're not gonna wanna make a person feel bad is gonna elect someone that probably may not do as good a job as a chair as, you know, that someone else could, or be pressured into it. And I think going for the, the first time, uh, us appointing a chair and then having everyone get used to everybody to see what everyone's skills are and contributions to the board, then the next time, the, the board could elect their chair. We elect the first one, then after that, they, they self-serve.
We elect the first one for one year?
We appoint one for, for a year, I think, and.
How's that usually work with the boards?
Kind of both ways.
It can go either way.
Um, the rec, when we did the Parks Commission, we, we elected a chair. And I think just because a lot of the folks were inexperienced, and that's for, for me, that's gonna be, you know, it's, my opinion will be formed on depending on who we put on that. If we put, if we put a lot of people that are really experienced with boards, um, I don't think it's as important. But if we're putting people on there that don't have a lot of experience with how boards function, I think it's more important that we do pick one. But I'm, I'm okay with picking one. I just don't want, I don't want people to think that we are, we're dictating so much about that. You know, we're putting our.
I think once we've come up with the people that are gonna be on the board, we're not gonna have a, a, a hard time knowing amongst us who the first chair should be. I think we're gonna be able to select that fairly easy. That's just my own, my own thought.
Mike, any thoughts?
Yeah, I, I agree. I thi, I think it'll seem natural to us when we look at the group of people. Um, yeah, there should be somebody there that can help facilitate the conversations and that has some experience with serving on boards. Um, yeah, I, I don't think that we wanna appoint somebody to be the chair that has, you know, a polit, a particular political agenda or anything. Um, people are gonna have to have confidence in our choices in the whole board, including the chair. But I, I do agree with Tim that we should choose that chair and make sure that it's somebody who can help make sure everybody has a chance to speak and facilitate the conversations and keep the wheels on.
Yeah. Okay, any comments on that?
No, I think it's good.
Marie, you good with that?
I'm fine with that. Yep.
Okay, that'd be good. Alright, so council appoint. Uh, let's move on to, uh, the next discussion would be terms. So if you have seven individuals.
Two, two for one year, three for two years, two for three years. I'm just, just throwing that out for, for discussion.
I think so. I think it, and I think our alternate, we put as a one-year because I'm.
Yeah.
I'm thinking that someone may feel that this isn't exactly what they thought it was gonna be or, so.
You said three for two years, Tim?
Yeah, and then two for three years.
And the alternate one?
And I think when they come up, and the one-year, when they come up, when you reappoint, it's for three years. So they're all, they will all be three years, but the first time we appoint them, it'll be three for one year, three for two years, two for three. But then when the one-years come up.
So you'd rather have it that way? Okay.
I'd rather have it that way, just three years. That way, that's not, cause otherwise, in six years, all of them will be up at the same time.
Right, right, right.
Threes will come, even with your twos and with your ones, so.
You're better at math than I am, obviously.
So it just makes sense, the first time we'll do that, and then each time after that is three, every, every appointment's three years.
I'll, 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 I'll let the mathematician do it.
Math never was Jim Strong question.
I became a lawyer.
Isn't, isn't there a judge that awarded someone from Pfizer or Johnson and Johnson like forty-three billion dollars and said he made a mistake? It was only supposed to be forty-three thousand or something?
I don't remember that.
That was recently, like within the last couple of weeks, he's like, I'm never doing math again.
Be good to Pfizer, you have a vaccine, come.
Okay. Um, I think that's all I had on my list. Um, I missed something.
So when are we gonna do this?
I got, I got something. Uh, how, how are we, how are we gonna do this? Um, are we, are we, when we, when we're looking at these applicants at our homes and in our minds, are we scoring them uh, on a one-to-ten scale?
That's how I, that's how I did it.
Well, are we, are we gonna, are we gonna score them by, uh, aptitude? Are we gonna score them by, um, their contribution, uh, their contribution to the board? Are we gonna score them by, uh, whether we need to have a diverse group come in? You know what I mean? I mean, how, how are we scoring these people? Are we taking the, the smartest seven people? Are we taking the, the ones with the highest degrees? Are we doing, you know what I mean? How, how, so we're all doing it the same way. I, I don't know, I just want to figure out how we're gonna do it.
Why do we need to do it all the same way? As long as we come up with seven people or eight people and we have a reason why we came up with it, why does it all have to be consistent?
I don't know. I mean, I, I, I guess I could pick seven people to be scientists and seven people to be, you know, something else. You know what I mean? I'd have to look at their back.
Doesn't mean you're gonna get your picks, I mean.
Well, when we go to discuss and compare one to the other, if we were all looking at apples, it would be easier than if some people are looking at them as oranges and some as apples.
Yeah, if you wanna do it like the, uh, graph way, if, you know, you're, you know, the, your, your top one to seven and then somebody keeps scoring, this is the one that got the most number-one votes, number, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, but I don't know if that works, though. I don't know if that works in this particular situation.
I don't know either.
So I scored mine on, um, diversity and what I thought they could bring to the board. So I tried.
Skills and diversity, yeah.
When I was doing it, I tried to pick people with varying viewpoints and their experience. So that's how I did it.
Say it again, varying viewpoints?
Varying viewpoints and, and, um, their, their knowledge, so, you know.
Skill set.
Skill set, yep.
I was, I was looking at varying skill sets to get somebody from different areas of the, uh, um, that could bring some perspective in board.
Mike? Any thoughts?
Yeah, I, I, I think that that's a, a decent way to think about it. Um, I think when, when we actually look at the results of how each one of us scored each one of the candidates, um, and who our top choices are, I bet there'll be a few people that, that a lot of us select, and there might be a few people on the margins that we really ha, have to have some discussions about, and it'll be hard to be scientific about that. Um, I guess the bigger question than how we're scoring them, if we're not gonna use a really hard and fast sort of voting mechanism, like a rubric, uh, to put people into, is are we gonna try to reach a consensus? Or, you know, if, is it gonna come down to a consensus on a few people and a vote on a few people? And do we need to make that decision before we have the conversation?
I would say, yeah.
I think we should try to come to consensus and if, and if we get to a point where we can, then we don't do it by vote with the ones that we can't.
But I agree with you, Mike. I think there's, I think there's three or four that we could present that we're probably all gonna be on the same page on.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Is my thought, but.
I think it's just us sitting in a room and having a discussion about it, really. I don't, I can't think of anything else we haven't been able to work out without discussing.
That's, that's what I was thinking initially.
We work very well together.
And then the next question is, when are we gonna do this?
How long do you think it's gonna take? Couple hours?
I think.
Hopefully it won't take a couple of hours, but.
As I say, I, I think about, I think about an hour.
I, I think the other, when you add an alternate, that makes it almost that much easier.
I think we're gonna have three or four that are, and it's just the discussion on the other three or four.
Are we gonna come in here and talk about it or are we gonna zoom?
The other, the other piece of this, just so you know, is that, so I think, I don't know who's spoken to Dom, but Dom's hope is that we get to the point where we pick it, we, we decide on a, on a, on a chair, and he's hoping to have that chair on the interview committee for the police chief.
I'd like to have it. Yeah, I'd like to have it by the end of this weekend, the list. Is that enough time, Tim? Friday, if we did Friday or Saturday.
I really haven't looked at any of those yet, but, yeah.
What are you gonna do, on the weekend? Zoom meeting or?
Doesn't bother me. I mean, it's gonna be forty degrees and crappy out.
Mm-hmm.
It's not a boat weekend.
Or a bike weekend.
Or a bike weekend. It is not.
Um, well, I got appointments on the weekends, but, uh.
We can do Friday evening or something.
Does that give you enough time?
We do it early enough.
That is true.
Well, today's Tuesday, cause, is Thursday feasible?
Thursday's fine.
Today's enough for you, Tim.
Yeah, does that give everybody enough time to really look at them, the way they want to?
You off tomorrow?
Come up. Is anyone, do anyone think, do anyone wanna get together Saturday morning?
Can do that.
It's fine with me.
That might be tough for me. I got kids hockey and there's a cleanup day at Albans Hill.
Well, Sunday morning. Go to church?
I do go to church, but I'm always looking for excuses to get out. Can you edit that, please?
When you say morning, when you're talking about.
I don't need Father Chalobah to see that.
Anytime before twelve.
Coming in here or?
Yeah.
Cause I don't, I get around, but not very fast right now, so, uh.
We do it Sunday, I like to start at eight o'clock or so or.
Put service at eight-thirty or what?
I couldn't make the eleven.
Oh, okay.
Couldn't make the eleven.
Yeah, I've got church at ten-thirty that I'd like to make, so if we, if we did like an eight or an eight-thirty, that would work for me.
Do eight on Sunday.
I can. Jimmy?
Guess I'll have to.
Marie, you working or you all set?
No, no, we're closed Sunday.
Guess we're doing eight on Sunday.
Does that work for you, Marie?
Mm-hmm.
Right here.
Yep.
You need Zoom?
What's that?
Will you be needing Zoom?
No, we'll be in executive session.
You'll be all here at the same time?
We'll all be here.
Right, we'll all be here, yeah. Everyone, everyone good with that? There seems to be a little hesitation, but.
Gives Kristen enough time to warn it.
Marie, that's fine.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, works for me.
So eight o'clock here?
Eight to three AM.
Is there anything that I missed relative to, uh, committee makeup, committee by, uh, not by laws, but guidelines? Is there anything where?
Uh, that's the thing, I'm, I'm not sure what the, we got a lot of questions, uh, on the guidelines. Is something we're putting together or is that working?
Well, there was that one pager that Dom had, but I, I think, as I shared, I think it's.
Is that enough detail as to what this board's gonna do?
Well, I, I, I think it's gonna be added to or something subtracted from. I think whoever the candidate are, need to know that it's not, that's not cast in stone.
I think that's the first thing they do, is they look at that and.
Map out.
Map out what they want and then, yeah, can bring it to us and see if that's okay with us or not. I don't, just don't want them pushing into where they shouldn't be pushing.
That was, it kinda segues into my question, which is, um, how often do we expect to hear from them? Cause I'm wondering if in the beginning, it shouldn't be more often, so we can sort of check in and make sure they're on track or answer questions or, or is that just too much of us poking our nose in?
My first thought was, um, they would do it twice a year, just like all the other boards.
I think here in the beginning, if they're meeting every month, I'd like to hear from them quarterly, at least for the first half a year. Cause I think they're gonna go through a lot of stuff this first six months. It's gonna be busy.
So, we can, I mean, that, we can decide that on the fly. We don't.
Yeah.
I don't think it'd be decided now.
And they would be providing an update in the weekly updates we get? Or no, that's just departments?
I don't think so. Unless it came in in the police, in the police report.
I don't know. I, I think quarterly is enough right off for those guys. I mean, it's a pretty important board.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, he's saying quarterly to meet with us.
Meet with us.
Yeah.
They're gonna meet, they're gonna meet, my guess is every month at the minimum. I don't, if I wanted to know what they're doing every meeting, I would just go to their meeting.
Right.
Well, we're, we're, we meet, we meet what?
Once a month.
What are we meeting?
Once a month.
So.
Four times a week?
Um, I, I think you make a good point, Adam. I mean, if we, if any of us wanna know more, you, you, we can go sit in on.
I think it's gonna be important to get frequent updates at the beginning of the year, so I think.
I, I think, I think early on, your first two months are just gonna be administrative and before they get into data and everything else, I think. I think it's gonna be.
This is the most important board here for a while, so.
Well, that's why I was wondering if we should, if we needed more regular updates as a council. Um, but I don't know, maybe, maybe it's something we talk to them about and say, how do you want your first three months to look? I just don't want them to get three months down the road and into a project that we're like, hey, oh geez, that's not what we were thinking.
So who do they answer to? You got, so every board has a staff.
Yeah, they have, they have the chief.
So it'll be the chief, not?
The chief is the official?
The chief is the official, yeah. It's the chief's advisory board.
I, that's not why I looked at it, but that's okay. I think it's the public, I think it's the advisory board to relate to the chief the way people, I don't think it's the chief's board. I didn't see it that way at all, and I even, I thought.
Well, no, but it's, that's.
Maybe that's why you guys did it when I wasn't around, but that's what it is.
That's who's, that's who's gonna be presenting and sharing information, and that's who's gonna be looking for advice. Like, I didn't think the city manager was gonna be there, I didn't think any of us was gonna be there, I don't think anyone else was gonna be there.
Why does anybody have to be there, except the board?
Well, just every board has an administrative support, is that right, Chip?
Yep. Every board has a staff member assigned to them to help them put their agendas together, information, get the meeting set up.
And is the role, is the role purely support? Is it to be a liaison? Is it, what's, what's it for?
Typically all of the above. The relationships, you know, Dave Southwakes' relationship to the DRB, where they're part, both, they're both part of a, a specific process, is a little different than, you know, Andrew Groton and the Parks Commission. Um, but they're, in the end, you're, you're all kinda doing the same stuff. You're, it's, it's good to have, but I'll, I'll let you decide, but city staff can have an important role in just making sure the meeting's set up, that they have their space, that the agenda went out, you know, that sort of thing.
So to that point, is that, is that what we want the chief doing?
No.
I don't think so.
No.
I don't think so.
And I, I, and I know this board's gonna do a lot of things, but if somebody wanted to come to the board with an issue they have with police, they don't wanna do it with the chief sitting there.
Right, you wanna have the opportunity to not have the chief.
That's gonna be, that's what the chair is gonna do for that board, right?
What's that?
All that administrative stuff, I mean, although they're not due minutes probably.
I mean, that's the thing, why, how, why is this different than DRB or the makeup of it?
There's normally someone doing minutes too.
Alright.
Minutes, but, you know, putting the, as you said, Chip, putting the agenda together and make sure, make sure the room's ready and all that.
For the city council, you know.
Getting packets out.
For the city council, Chris, Kristen can do that work. Um, there are, the, the police department has administrative staff that could do a lot of that work. Uh, it doesn't have to be, it can be a team effort, but, um, you know, in the case of the city council, Dom, Dom does the most work of the agenda. Kristen makes sure it goes out, Kristen gets the packet together. Um, and does the minutes as well and, and moderates the Zoom meeting. She's behind the scenes right now. With, uh, DRB, uh, Dave and Tammy work together. Tammy does the min- With, uh, DRB, uh, Dave and Tammy work together. Tammy does the minutes during the meeting. Dave does his role as zoning administrator during the meeting. The planning commission, I, I'm the primary staff member, and I have another person who does the minutes during the meeting. I think Andrew does everything for the Parks Commission, does the minutes and the, no? I think he does. So, yeah, there's, you know, there are varying degrees of staff support. In, in retrospect, it's typically, it's more than one. In the end, that's really assigned to every, everything that gets done, from making sure the meeting happens, setting the agenda, posting everything, doing the minutes, following through.
I think, uh, doesn't that come under Dom? Dom will figure out who's the person gonna be.
For minutes, take minutes, or for, for staff support?
Staff support.
I'm okay with letting him do that. He's good at it.
And figure out who's, who's got the availability and the time and let him...
Yeah. You really have to hire somebody. That's what they need, they want.
Right.
Someone's gotta do it six times a year. Not to break us.
I mean, I'm not real familiar with the structure of the police department right now, but who's, uh, got the job there that Ruth Miller used to have when she was there? Whatever job that is, I could be the support person, is what I was thinking, but...
I'd like to have kind of thought that the city was the answer to us. We created the board.
Yeah.
And we're the direct liaison with the public. I'd like to think that we're the ones that they answer to. I'm not, I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn, but...
Yeah, but we can't be support persons, though. I agree the board should answer us. Public came to us, we created the board, we're...
I don't, I don't wanna speak out of turn, but every board does answer to you. City council appoints all board members, and you can remove all board members with cause. Uh, the relationship with staff is actually nor, it's, it's that staff is associated with a function of the city that either receives direction from the board, or like depends upon input from that board. Uh, and staff's there to make sure the board can do their work, in that if, if it's part of this setup that staff sort of carries out, um, the board's decisions. Like when I'm working with the planning commission, they have a couple roles that they have to play, where they get to, they get to make a decision, and then I have to carry it out. Otherwise, it's more of a, you know, they're advising the work that my department does. When Dave's working with the DRB, you know, the DRB is, is making decisions. Dave then is charged with enforcing their decision. But all boards, I don't think there's, we have great relationships, and we defer to each other when necessary, but there's really no board that works for their assigned staff. The boards work for the city council and the people of the city.
I don't wanna spend too much more time. I mean, we'll, we'll...
We'll figure it out.
We'll flush it out as the time goes on. It's not, I think we're in the right direction for sure, so... Is there anything else we're missing relative to the board makeup and structure? Sunday morning, we'll figure out the, the, uh, the individuals. Anything else we're missing?
I'm coming Monday, Sunday with my list from top to bottom.
Your list from top to bottom?
So, so we should all rank them, and so we all start in the same line?
By the way, I'm on a good mind, I guess.
Good starting point.
Yep.
Did you hear that, Mike?
Yep, I'll bring my list.
Any other?
And then what do we, like, we're gonna put them on a whiteboard or something, or just gonna yell it out loud?
Royal rumble.
We can, we can do it upstairs if people are comfortable with that. If not, we can...
Well, yeah, Jim can make it, the elevator, yeah. Or bring, have the whiteboard down here, I don't care.
We have a portable whiteboard, Chip?
We'll get one, or, uh...
We're just like, the white sticky paper?
We can do an easel, we have posters or an easel.
Just an easel pad, easel pad will work, too.
Yeah, we have those.
Motion to move out of executive session?
We're not...
We did go in and...
Oh, oh, we're in open, so it's right, roll. Motion to adjourn.
So I, I was good, right? Nothing else? No one?
Yeah, no, that's good. I'll say.
You, um, for signatures, you ended up signing the ordinance twice. I just need signatures on the resolutions for the DMS.
Okay.
Uh, if, if you want to, you can, but we have a majority of signatures, so we're good. Yeah.
Okay, uh, so we have a motion to adjourn that was Tim followed by...
Chad.
Chad, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hey, anyone opposed to that?
Yep.
Alright. I hope to see you all tomorrow night someplace.
Happy birthday.
Well, thank you.
My son's birthday.